Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any requests to move items from the consent agenda to the right of the agenda for discussion? The purple now will give you items on the consent agenda.
I'm May. Motion to approve the minutes in the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two regular session. Item B, Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash eighteen. A resolution authorizing the city clerk at the City of Cameron to destroy certain records and orders with applicable retention schedules.
Thank you. All right. Chairman, underpinning motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved, consent.
So moved, consent. All in favor, please state if I am saying that.
Aye.
One extension.
All opposed, or in favor, one extension. All right. The next item on the agenda is appointments. I think at this time it is for review only, and then will it be appointed the next meeting? If I got that right? Okay. All right. So the TIF committee, if I understand this correctly, has recommended, went up to a request to renew this term. Okay. All right. And we'll bring that up formally at the next meeting.
All right.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's report manager's essence.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor. And I had a couple of items that I wanted to go through here. One was the discussion of service lines. And based on some additional staff work beginning to do on that, we've recommended the council that we move that presentation back until April eighteenth council meeting. And I think I've mentioned that to most of your members and having the objectives to that. However, there is an issue about that which comes to the use of the use tax. And that had come up several times. And so I'd ask the city attorney if he would explain what the use tax, what the use tax, and we call it the infrastructure use tax, could actually be used for. Because that does bear on some of this and has been reported in different places. So I wanted to get it convinced everybody's got exactly the same story and knew what we can move forward on as we move into the time period when we get ready for this vote on the use tax.
Patrick?
So statutorily, the use tax can be used for any public purpose. The city council were deciding to put the question before the voters limited that further to infrastructure. So that would mean any publicly owned public works, roads, bridges, water mains, things like that. However, service lines, as the code is currently set up, are not publicly owned. They are privately owned. So the use tax could not be utilized to repair those service lines. That'd be like repairing somebody's driveway outside the right of way. Because those service lines are just access to public infrastructure. They are not themselves public infrastructure. Or spending money on those would not be for a public purpose. They would be for a private purpose.
But now it is possible then to spend that use tax on the actual water main because they are public. Is that right?
Yes. Water mains, streets, sidewalks, publicly owned buildings, things of that nature.
And then I go back to Carmen. Typically, we do not use the money from a enterprise fund like the mains or doing any other public work like roads or something. But we would generally not use a general fund money for repairing those sewer mains because as an enterprise fund, it has its own source of revenue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I think the answer is the council could use it for those things. But whether or not you should is a question for you. Okay?
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay. The next thing I wanted to talk about is our boards. Now, we've been talking about boards, and I got a question from several council members about the current board. And so I gave a pretty long discussion of that in your packet. But what I wanted to do was say that we have, currently have ten boards. And five of them are statutory. And that is their composition and appointment is dictated by state statutes essentially. And those boards are TIF, parks, planning and zoning, board of adjustment, and the industrial development board. But then we have three boards that are ad hoc. That means they were established by city ordinance. And they're the community center, the cemetery, and tourism. The two remaining boards are what I would call non-city involvement boards. And that is the city only appoints those members of the board and then doesn't have any further involvement in them. And those are the library and the housing boards. Now, there are two boards that are interested here because the city has been involved with their creation in the last two years. And I've been asked questions about that. The first one was the Main Street Board. And that was recreated, was created at the request of Missouri Main Street. And once it was created, it became a five oh one C three corporation, and then the city had no more involvement. And that's why we created the board, just because it needed to be created somewhere. And Missouri Main Street asked us to do that. And it's therefore not included in the above ten boards. The other board that was created by ordinance by the city council here a couple of years ago and is one of the ten is the community center board. And it was created by a separate ordinance and is now included in the city code. And I've included a copy of that for your review. So in order to create that board, we created its own ordinance. And so if the council wanted to create another kind of a new board, it is possible then what you would have to do is amend the city code to create that board the same way that we did the community center board. And included that because that may come up in our further discussions. Okay? And then I also had the note on the TDD. Patrick and I are currently scheduled to meet with the special road district on March ninth, considering their interest in being part of the TDD. And following that, I'll bring that back with the city council. But we did meet with the Clinton County Commission. They were interested in becoming a part of it. And since we need the two jurisdictions that have road repair authority to form that TDD with us in the county, we do have that. And the special road district will see what they think on Wednesday, and I'll bring that back to you. I also wanted to indicate also, not on your list, that Tim and I attended the annual meeting of the North Central Missouri Business Facilitation Group in Mayville on Wednesday. That was a good meeting. Many people were there. Tim is actually the vice president of that organization. And we were introduced there to Jackie Spainhauer, who is the new facilitator. You may remember Stephanie Williams, who oftentimes is here as a longtime facilitator for that. We now have a new member, Jackie Spainhauer, and she's available sometime when we're here and introduce her for all of us. And then the last item I wanted to mention was the annual strategic planning retreat. We haven't talked about that, but each year after the election, we do that. And it would be time for us to start contracting with someone to help us with that if the council still wanted to do that. We don't need a decision from anybody or discussion on that. But I just want to let you know that that's out there and you can think about whenever you would like to make a decision on that. Okay. That completes a rather lengthy report. Thank you. And answer any questions you may have on those things.
Questions, comments?
Okay. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and we got a discussion on the core, the code board of appeals.
If I could ask for a staff recommendation. Tim, could you come up and tell what the staff recommendation is? And then we can move forward. I know the last time we had this discussion, the council had made several decisions already, but the one that we had made was to power the members to ask him to do that. What I'd ask him to do is to pass out the document here, which is the page from the property maintenance code. And that is the page that talks about the appointment of a board of appeals. And that way you can all read that, I think, paragraph, yes, one, 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 one and two. Page, Tim?
Staff recommendation would be the same as previous council meetings to use the board of adjustment for the board of appeals with two additional members to create the hybrid board of appeal system. What I hand you is basically some information regarding the board of appeals and how, you know, a constituent can appeal the decision, you know, by city staff. And also it talks about the membership board and the alternate members for the board.
Any questions?
Thank you. I think that's all we have for you here.
Any further discussion on board of appeals?
Yes. I've spent a lot of time over this, but so has Abby Beal. Thank you, Shelley, for today. And since we have learned more information from the first time that Tim gave this to us, is that we already have a board of appeals. Had one, so it's not a new board. So I think we need to forget this new board stuff. Besides, we don't have an ordinance in our city policies and our city ordinance on creating new boards. So, because I could look into that as well. So since it's already been authorized by ordinance from two thousand and eight, then why don't we just go ahead and take the candidates that have applied for this? Have any of the board of adjustments applied for these positions?
Not that I would.
Well, we only.
We didn't ask them to.
I think we did that night we had the meeting.
No.
With them.
We didn't. We didn't ask them to get back on the board because the vote was to use the board of adjustment. So we need to have to solicit membership to the board of adjustment. Just in that regard.
I think we just said at the time, without the information we now have, at the time, we were going to do a, what's it called? A hybrid. But now that we already have a board of appeals that is ordinance driven, so therefore all we need to do is just appoint those to apply.
I know that we did that with the.
I think we were confused about board of adjustment and board of appeals. I have application for board of appeals. I need to get application to the board of adjustment.
From the board, from the members of the board.
Yes.
Because I think we asked the community center members, board members to do that also, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Okay. So I think we're just trying to make.
I did not ask the board to have adjustment to apply. I didn't do that.
I asked you to ask them. Didn't I? Or say, you know, if they need to apply.
Well, yeah, we.
And I think the reason was is what was voted on. That's.
That's right.
Yeah, that was.
That's right. Because that's without the information that we now have.
That we had a board of appeals.
Right. Because we didn't know that.
Okay.
And I think the board of appeals we did have in two thousand and eight, none of those people who were on that are now available for reappointment or have been appointed.
No.
Patrick, what happens to a member of a board if they're not reappointed or if they're not, we don't put somebody else on?
Under the Missouri constitution, you continue to serve until your successor is duly appointed and qualified. So technically, every single member of, that was appointed in two thousand and eight, is still technically on board of appeals.
I think Shelley said nobody was ever appointed on that. Is that right?
Well, we don't know.
I have a list of people that says it was inactive, and I have a list of people. But after the property maintenance code was adopted in two thousand and eight, I looked through a year's worth of minutes, and there was never any appointments made by the council. So I don't know if that was done just through with the building inspector. Because I also don't have any record of them ever having any meetings. So I don't know if it ever got off the ground.
Well, to me, just from last meeting, I think the general understanding from board of adjustments is that they prefer to hybrid. They would be willing to serve. Two members would be selected. They would review the candidates and make recommendations, and then would come to the council. So however we get there, it would be what I am comfortable with. And I think that's what that board is expecting, and I was very comfortable with that decision.
Well, I think they changed, and I think we should just go with the candidates that we have that actually applied, since it is an already board of by ordinance, even though it's never been filled. And we have enough. How many do we have?
Number three.
Right.
I had one that had applied that I was not able to confirm that they were still interested.
I'm not sure we even asked for people to apply. I think this was.
Oh, you did? All right.
Then I have five.
Five. Five has been.
I have six, and the sixth one I have not, I think, lied.
And you have how many?
I have six. I have.
Five for sure. One that should not have been included.
Yes. And actually, one of them was previously disqualified. I had her contacted me here to be paid with tax.
Okay. So right now we have five?
Yes.
And I know we've been kicking this can long ago, so.
Did we act, okay. So my question is, before we change this, did we actually take a vote that we would have a hybrid? And that the board of adjustments would serve in that hybrid? Did we actually take a vote on that, or was that just a discussion?
At the February seventh meeting, there was a motion and a second to utilize the board of adjustments with additional members for board of appeals. And that motion passed, began to be manning sleeve. And then later, there was a motion and a second for a seven-member hybrid board of appeals. And the attempt was to use the board adjustment plus two additional members. And that passed, began a sleeve at the February seventh meeting. Can I send it? Can do this right?
So if we send it and do it around as you say, what's that going to look like to you? Or is that up to you?
Well, it looks like we ended up with some information we didn't have at first. And so we were trying to level through with the information we had. And we took the advice, good advice, from the chair of the adjustments. But I really feel like we should do things according to what the way in which the city to which it's applied. And I know this is different, but we did not know we had the board of appeals at that time.
It is then.
Yeah, it does. Because we had the ordinance for that. This is what we did last time with the ordinance. It was just trying to find our, getting to where we thought we needed to go, since we didn't have anything to run on. Because normally, we either make an ordinance that follows the statute, and we don't have any ordinance for new boards. And really, we really shouldn't create a new board unless there is an ordinance to create one or create one specifically like we did the community building. To now, like, kind of get, like, to do things according to statutes.
So Shelley, back in two thousand and eight or before, when all that was, was there actually an ordinance to create that board?
That ordinance was to approve the property maintenance code.
And the dimension of this appeal board is within the property maintenance code.
It's also an ordinance.
Okay. And we also have a newer ordinance than that, don't we?
Yes. In fact, you want to comment on that?
You guys have, the city council has re-adopted the property maintenance code several times with slight variations. But it's always included within the code board of appeals.
And that was the one that the council approved on March fourth, two thousand and nineteen, the copy of which Patrick, Tim gave you.
Right. Isn't that the one we actually consciously put in the minutes that we were going to have a board? Isn't that the one that we were?
Not that we were going, not that we were going to have any.
Oh.
But that it was part of the property maintenance code.
And you decided whether you wanted to keep it in there and.
Right. And. And then we had a big discussion about it. I don't think we need it. And that was part, that was part of the discussion is that I don't think we need it. I think we are going to take care of that with courts. But you all decided that we, did we decide that we needed it?
I think so.
Do we have a?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't have those.
That's fine.
Okay.
I don't know.
So, and I understand that we do need it because when someone gets a ticket in those with court, the court applies. Because the court is hired by the city, and so is prosecutor.
Okay.
So I, I mean, if we're going to do something different, I'm not sure what the motion, I don't know what the motion needs to be. Or we just move ahead with the board of appeals?
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
I know.
We like to kind of get this over with.
It seems to be like we've already got our ducks in a row. Unless we want to change where our ducks are going.
Well, I know. But just like the community center bill board wanted to become a city board without applications, I think the board of adjustments to become a board of appeals without applications is not the way in which I felt we as a city ran.
Okay. So basically.
I mean, that's just.
We just need to get applications from the board, the members of the board of adjustments to become members of the board of appeals.
Well, we did tell them, obviously, I can find out, that they didn't have to do that. But I've always wanted them to do that.
Why do they have to do that?
Well, and let me just explain my intuition, which apparently was not correct, was that it would just be the city board of adjustment plus two members, not that we were going to appoint a separate board with five members that aren't the board of adjustments and plus two more people.
Exactly. And I think the staff has had some confusion on that point as well as to whether or not the city council's intent is to appoint the board of zoning adjustment, the BCA itself. So that it's automatic, if you're on the BCA, you're also on the code board of appeals. Or if the city council's decision is to just appoint the five members, the five people that currently make up the board of zoning adjustment to the code board of appeals.
Okay. So then we're back, we're back to it being either a board that we're adding to or a new board. And I think we decided it wasn't a board.
Patrick, if it's a new board, then automatically has the members of the board of adjustment on that, then does that require any ordinance?
So to automatically include the board of adjustment members on there would require us, would require the city to amend Article twenty-eight board of adjustment of the canon zoning ordinance, to designate the BCA as part of their role to be the code board of appeals. If you're going to appoint simply the five people that are currently on the BCA to the code board of appeals, that would just be a regular typical appointment with those five names listed in the list to additional.
So then they would need to fill out an application.
If you, I'm not sure what the application, non-application exact.
Well, if anybody wants to be on a board, they have to fill out an application.
And if you appoint the BCA wholesale, I guess technically you would just say that they've already filed their application, and they became members of the BCA. That'd be the same application.
And it could be versus new board creation.
Exactly. And a new board creation, the city council created the board, right? When you adopt the property maintenance code, that created a board. You haven't filled the seats on the board.
And we have five applicants who are willing to serve. And so we're going to appoint somebody that's already, people, a group that's already on their own board into this board, because we have five applicants willing to serve.
But they have to be qualified by experience and training to pass on merit to change the strategy.
Well, I said we should have decided that.
That's a really good question.
We've already decided that. We've already decided that we were going to appoint the five people in the board of adjustments to the board of appeals. So if we don't want to do that, I think that's why they have to change it. Otherwise, we can't appoint those five people to the board of appeals. Patrick?
So if we're going to add to that board, we need to.
Well, again, if.
No, that's not, yeah, that's not what I'm.
It wouldn't be added to the board. You would make the five BCA members automatically part of the code board of appeals, and then you would appoint two additional people to the code board of appeals.
To the board.
Right. I mean, we need a specific ordinance to.
You wouldn't need an ordinance for those, just two people. That would just be able, like, your typical appointments are on their agendas.
But if you made it automatic, then the board of appeal.
It would take, you would have, not a new ordinance, you would have to amend Article twenty-eight of the zoning ordinance. Which would require public hearing and completing a mission recommendation, and then back to the city council for the final approval.
Well, to me, at the last meeting, everybody was comfortable with the board of adjustments and two more members. And those members would apply to board adjustments, and there would be their recommendation. They already had a foundation of knowledge. So I am comfortable with that, but I don't know how the rest would be feeling. But I'm comfortable with that.
I think if that was, giving us a board, I think that would be the great thing.
Oh, just to get one because it looks like.
Because it looks like we already have a board, we just haven't had people been pointed to it. People that are qualified. I think possibly the mistake was made when somebody said, oh, well, we'll just volunteer these people. I don't think that was right, and I never thought that was exactly right anyway. But that's what they did. Okay. But when you're looking at the at that, this is the, are the codes. But we can change those codes. And that's why we have the discussion.
They're guidelines.
They're guidelines. Just because it, that it was put in there that we were going to have a board, doesn't mean we have to. If we decide we don't want a board, we vote and we take that code out, that part of the code out.
Well, I don't think we should take that.
Well.
Because we, yeah. I don't think we need to put.
I know. But what I'm trying to say is, we don't already have a board.
I just, I heard that we do have a board because when we adopted the code, that created a board.
Isn't that what I heard? When we adopted the code, it created the board?
It did. But the city council could also.
It just didn't, it just didn't put any appointments in it. They created a board. So there is a board. Poor Mr., poor Mr., the poor free Mr. People that are on there, I won't mention their names because they moved out of town, and they probably have forgotten they're on the board. Still don't realize they're still on the board. There is something in there that said, how many of you will be on the board or what the term. It says at least three, who are qualified by experience and training and pass on manage, pertaining to property maintenance or not employees in the jurisdiction. I've had that memorized for about five years now. It used to be on page seventeen, and it's on page fifteen, now it's on page eleven. It depends on the format.
Where do we want to go from here? Do we, do we want to stay with what we decided last time, or do we want to start all over? That sort of thing?
Yeah. I want to get this done tonight. I don't think, I would have been voted during the meeting before it's done.
Oh, Gina.
I have all night. And I'll get some.
Brian Reed.
No. I think that we have this address that we have a board, that we have talked about people being on the board, people that are qualified have offered to be on the board, and they have already made applications to be on their other board. I don't know that that go forward, they have to be on it. We probably have to ask them when they could, when they start meeting, how many years they're going to be on this board. I'm sure, I'm sure that they do not want to be on it forever. But that would be up to that board. I think that we could absolutely go through the five people that are interested in tonight and find two names for them to be on this board. That board can get created tonight, and they can start meeting tomorrow.
I don't think you'd create it tonight because it's not noticed up on the agenda that you're willing to appoint those people.
Well, okay. Never mind. All right. Well, I'll be okay with adjourn, adjourn the meeting after a while, naturally.
You could decide, you decide how you want to do it and put the appointments on for next meeting.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I think where we're at is, we, Councilman Curtis is thinking about a motion to reconsider. And so we either are going to reconsider and then just start all over, or we're going to proceed with what we decided last time. Am I understanding this right? Counselor?
Yes.
So we either need to proceed with a motion to reconsider and scrap it and start over, or we're going to proceed with the, with the board of adjustments plus two members. And the agreement, as I recall last time, is they were going to go through the applicants, and they would make a recommendation, and that recommendation comes back to the council. Have I got that right, counselor?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to ask another question. So if what, if what Gina is saying is correct, then when we decided. then when we decided a couple of meetings ago that we were gonna have a Board of Appeals by appointing five, the five members of the Board of Adjustments plus two alternates, we got the cart before the horse, because we already had one?
I don't know if you, I would say the cart before the horse, you're considering new appointments to the existing Board of Appeals.
Well, actually, we could probably do one either with a board, we probably could. It's whatever we're gonna do.
But also, if I'm mentioning right, if you guys do want to go forward with the Board of Adjustment as a poll, then we'll come back, staff would have to come back with, uh.
It'd be, it'd probably, it wouldn't be the next meeting, I think it would have to be.
After PNC.
Yeah, April.
Okay, Gina, what would you like us to do on that, just your opinion on this?
Well, I always thought that it should be three to five people that really had nothing to do with the city. If you wanted to. I, I personally never thought that it was gonna take a lot of training to figure out whether stuff on somebody's porch was unsafe or not. You know, I, I think that the Board of Adjustment serves an extremely important role, because they are working with the building code, which is a very different thing than what I see property maintenance code. And the building code is for safety, you know, and I have never ever complained about safety codes in my life. But I have certainly complained about property maintenance codes, because the way they were being enforced, people were looking at a lot of aesthetics, as far as how a yard looked, or if there was a rock in it, or, or if something was painted, or if there was a window in the shed.
The property maintenance code also includes some of the building safety code as well. So it builds back and forth, reference from the ICC codes to the property maintenance codes, it's just not just.
Right. Yeah, and, and that's a point, property maintenance becomes a safety issue. You know, having a loose handrail is definitely a safety issue.
It's both becoming one of, one of the.
That's right. But what was happening was so many things, so many people were absolutely being tortured in getting multiple tickets to something that they could not help, that is actually not a safety issue. And I'm not talking just about myself, I'm talking about elderly citizens who I observe who are having problems. And they were getting ticket after ticket after ticket. And then letters going out to people that really, you know, if you're sending letters to people that have property management companies looking for them, what's the point of that?
Gina, I mean, I think that was more so the, the staff, uh, issue than the actual property maintenance rule issue.
That is true.
It all boils down to how a person interprets the code.
That's true, but that person, the next person you hire that's wanting to do that could do the same kind of thing. And that's why we need a Board of Appeals, so that somebody is there to butt, a buffer between them and the board. And the judge doesn't come from here, they're hired right here, but they come from another place. They don't have time to go around and drive around and look at somebody's property and say, well, I think the code enforcement officer is not exactly right on this, you know. And I always saw this as a possibility for some kind of a, a community development thing. I, I would love to see a board that was actually an active board, that actively helped people that did get tickets.
You know, like I said at our last meeting, we, we've also changed our philosophy as, as far as approaching people, you know, trying to make direct contact with them, whether it be in person, uh, by phone or email, uh, you know, Brandon O'Connell, and, and Paul Beckwood, they do a great job of doing that. You know, our, our goal is never to write tickets or to get into someone's pocketbook. You know, I would prefer that they would just comply, you know, abate the issue, and everybody gets down the road and be happy. Again, it goes back to, you know, that individual or individual who was enforcing the code, how they interpret the code was, was the issue, we've addressed that, and, you know, we're, we're moving on from that.
Right, but you could get somebody in the future who had a totally different philosophy than that, and that's what this board is all about.
Yeah, but at the same time, it's, it comes with, with, from within the, the department to, if we get complaints about that person's doing something like that, we would definitely address that.
Right. And the fact that you had a board for, since two thousand eight, and not, I didn't know that we had a board, which I certainly would appeal to that, that was never, that situation was never explained to me by the city that that can possibly happen. And there's probably several reasons for that, and one of them is that the code enforcement officer was bringing in about a hundred thousand dollars a year in fines, which is not a small amount, I mean, it's not, it wasn't enough to invoke that law about that. No, I'm not kidding, yeah, it, it's not enough of the, of the, to invoke the law. I can't remember, I just can't remember the little town where people would drive through and really wait really fast.
Mads Creek.
Mads Creek, yeah, it wasn't that, I came to the city council one time and asked about the Mads Creek law, and I got laughed at. I don't know how many times I've been laughed at here. But anyway, you know, a hundred thousand dollars is not the biggest percentage, a big enough percentage to, to, to say that that's been violated. Yeah, there, there was definitely a reason why this was never offered to anybody.
Okay, so we, we decided we're gonna have a board?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to move forward on this?
Yes.
Would you rather see a standalone board, or one that was incorporated with the finance level?
BCA.
Or an adjustment.
I would, I would always have thought, because it sounds like a standalone board here. We didn't have the information that you can have a board, and apparently not very many people have read each of them, or fifteen or seventeen's.
Okay, so we need to decide, because we have a lot to do yet tonight. The only thing we need to decide is whether we're gonna back up or we're gonna withhold.
I don't have a problem going forward, if we have to back up and keep this going for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, and hang on, this has been two years.
Well, actually, for, to, to incorporate the Board of Adjustments, it's gonna take till April. If we back up, we can probably get this on the agenda next time.
That would be great, then make the motion. I, I miss that the Property Maintenance Board of Appeals be a standalone board.
We need to reset.
We need to reset the other. We will rescind, let's rescind the previous motion.
Motion to reconsider using the Board of Adjustment on the Property Maintenance Board of Appeal.
Close enough.
I'm so moved. Start that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, it's a discussion. What, in terms?
I'm tired of talking about it.
Yeah, really, and I don't want to insult the Board of Adjustment, we don't, we don't. But we do want to do it fine.
Councillor, you should have any, any other word about the board?
I like what you don't want to do.
Okay. All right, um, the motion on the floor is to rescind, um, the the previous meeting's, uh, agreement to have the Board of Appeals consist of the Board of Adjustment and two members selected at large. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next. Okay, motion carries, order one, uh, we will, we are reconsidering and we will start over.
Okay, ma'am, there's one other thing you did last time, you asked that there would be seven members. Do you want to rescind that as well and reduce the number?
It's.
Five or seven, yeah.
Well, we didn't talk about seven, but we talked about it on there, the, so it's at least, well, depending on how difficult it is to get together. Five might be better.
Well, we have, we have six candidates now.
One won't be available until after PNC. And I don't have to.
But are you also gonna ask the other board to also put in an application?
If they want to be, if they want to be on the Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Am I gonna ask them, or do you want me to ask them, or do you want them to put that in because they want to be on the board?
Ask them.
Do we have, did we have it?
I don't have permission. I, I take applications to the boards all the time.
Okay.
They needed to do it before you decide who's gonna be on the board.
Yes.
If you, that's what I'm saying, if anybody on the Board of Adjustments wants to be on the Board of Appeals, then they give a lot of time to prepare.
Yep, and if you give these other communities time, I'll try to ask them that we can.
Okay. All right, so now we need a motion to decide if it's gonna be five, so that we don't have to plow this ground next time. Say it. Okay, move to second.
I make the, I make a motion that we have five members on the board.
So we're, we're rescinding the, the motion to make seven in place of the five?
So, so we can rescind first, okay?
Well. The agreement.
We can have it all, do it all at once.
I don't, we already have that, rescinded?
You rescinded using the Board of Adjustments. Um, the second motion you get to vote on was have a seven-member board, board consisting of five Board of Adjustment and two at-large people, so.
I make a motion that we rescind that.
So moved. To rescind and have having?
Five.
No. So moved.
Okay. Motion on the second to change the Board of Appeals from seven members to five members.
Okay, who did the motion?
I, the councillor, and also the second is councillor. Is there any discussion?
My only question would be, do you want to put a minimum of on here, or just say five?
Just say five.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll pursue vote, all those in favor of having a Board of Appeals with five members, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five in favor, zero opposed. And that will conclude our discussions of the Board of Appeals.
Who do you want to rescind on that, you guys?
How about next time?
Get a comeback next time?
Well, I, I don't have time to, I think, we can, we can see, I.
I've got the ones that I have, I didn't know if you wanted to have time for more applications.
Up until, the, you probably need to say what that is, because that's how they need it, it's by five o'clock, or back Monday.
It'll be, uh, happen to go out on.
Same Saturday's day.
Um, well, also, are we supposed to kind of look at it first, like?
Well, the first time they come to you will be for review.
Okay, good, I thought, I liked the way.
And then, and then the second time it comes back for appointment, that you review them, but will, will, those reviewed be the five that are recommended, or will be the whole list, and then you choose on that?
So we are the ones that are choosing to start.
Okay.
So, so this, we're understanding, what'll happen is at the next meeting, we'll bring back all of the candidates for you to review, and then at the following meeting, you will choose five.
Right, yay.
That's what we should.
Okay.
So let it be written, so let it be that.
Okay, next item on the agenda is new business, we have a requested full reading of Bill twenty-two-two dash seven.
Bill twenty-two-two dash seven, an ordinance authorizing a management agreement for the Cameron Park facility by and to the City of Cameron, Missouri, and the Cameron Park Board and Midwest Pool Management.
Thank you, Chair, doing a motion to pass the twenty-two-two dash seven on first reading. Second? Move to second, discussion, uh, Mr. Goff?
At the February twenty-fourth, uh, park board meeting, Midwest Pool Management was in house with us, um, we have decided that, or the park board decided that it would be in our best interest to hire Midwest Pool Management, uh, for the twenty-two-two season, they, they managed a pool for us in the twenty-twenty season, and did a, did a good job for us, um. We would actually like to have them winterize the pool this season, be the first time we've ever had a outside agency winterize the pool. They hire the staff, they will, uh, train the staff. One thing, currently, there's kind of a hard time finding guards in the area, and that's one of the advantages of hiring this company is, uh, they manage pools all throughout, you know, the state really. Uh, so if we had a shortage here, they could bring in the staff from, you know, Carney or one of the other pools that they manage. The agreement would start, well, it would start from the time you sign it, uh, but they would still tentatively plan on opening the pool May twenty-eighth and, uh, running it through August twenty-first. Uh, the flat management fee would be thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, uh, spread it over, uh, five payments. And that's, that's just for them to manage the pool. And then there's a do not exceed, uh, salary cap, which basically we would pay in advance. They would use that, those funds to pay the staff, pay the, you know, the, everybody, as far as the manager, the system manager, the guards, all that. And if there was money left over at the end of the season, they didn't use all that, they would give that money back to us. The city, uh, gets all the gate, all the concessions, every dollar that's generated at the pool is, goes back to the city and the park board, so, uh, my recommendation that the city approves hiring Midwest Pool Management for the twenty-two-two season. Any questions?
Questions, Goff? Are we required to have a minimum amount of staff?
Yes, our, our pool with the new layout is gonna require at least ten guards, well, ten guards to, to staff all the water adequately. So we're gonna have ten guards, starting off, there'll probably be two front desk workers just because of the influx at the beginning of the season, and, uh, and then from that point, I'll probably move out to one, uh, door person, one concession stand worker, and either a manager or system manager, all those on staff.
I guess the point is, like every other business around here, if they're super short staff, are they gonna be allowed to, to close the pool, or are we, are they required to bring somebody in, figure out how to, but it has to be open? It has to be staffed?
Yes, they, they will, if there's a staff shortage in Cameron, they'll redirect from another facility to make sure we stay open. So that's, that's definitely a benefit to this company.
Is that much, is that amount been already vested with?
Yes.
Park?
Any other questions, Goff?
Um, the, I'm just curious, since they're gonna winterize it, what's, can you tell me?
That is something that the city, uh, water department has done in years past, and it's, it's a pretty adept process of draining the pool to a certain level, or completely drain it, uh, blow out all the lines, pumps. Uh, and it'll be completely different with the new facility, probably actually more in-depth than our old facility, just because it was very basic before, and now, you know, we have different filtration and different water handling systems. So it'll, it'll actually be a bigger deal now than before, but basically, when they leave for the season, the, the pool will be ready to handle any freezing conditions, and hopefully, you know, no broken water lines or anything like that.
And if something like that would happen?
Well, then, we would address that when it comes up, and it, I, we would go reach out to them, and I'm sure the, you know, agreement we have with them doesn't really speak to that, but, yeah, it's something we look, do after and before to, to take care of that, so.
Awesome.
Don't worry, it'll, it'll be fine.
Okay, so this may, that's a big salary, that's, that's kind of hefty. So are we, we as a city gonna flip that and give them that amount?
And it, it, it works out in a monthly, if you look, I don't, you guys have the contract in front of you? Yes.
Yeah.
So, make Ju-, or May, May first, we'll give them twenty-six thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. And that'll, that will take care of all their staffing for the month of May.
Okay.
And then it's just, and, and honestly, um, they said, you know, come September or August, if, if they're already ahead and they think that they will have enough money to cover all their costs, because if, say there's inclement weather and they have to close, those, the staff at that point, you know, that's not, they'll just send them home, and we don't have to pay those, so, uh, you know, those type of things will offset some of these costs, and so hopefully, that's, that's a, that's a maximum amount, we won't spend more than that for salaries. If you see down below, it, it kind of has a breakdown of the management fee, or the, what they're gonna be paying their managers, system manager, lifeguards, now that's. Now, that does include work comp, and that's not exactly what the guard can be getting per hour, but that's what we're paying them.
Gotcha.
And Carmen, then can you tell us where, where, what part of the budget those fees come out of? The payment for the, uh, uh, pool contract to guard and management fee?
Will come from, all of this financial activity comes out of the park fund. There is a pool department and a park department, and these management fees will come out of the pool department. And the revenues, as Mr. Gar has indicated, from the concession and the gates will come back to this park department revenue line item.
And they'll somewhat balance.
That's, that's the goal.
Hopefully, yeah, right? Let's see, I need it. Okay.
How, how much higher is this contract than our twenty twenty and twenty nineteen?
Yeah, we did, and it has went up, uh, but I'm sure that's par for the course on all these kind of agreements. You know, minimum wage has went up, a, uh, I can't tell you the exact figure, but I think roughly seventy-eight thousand dollars, uh, for the management fee side of it. So, and, and I'm sure that coincides with the, the salary side of it as well.
And, but of course, the, the other part of that is it's now a bigger, better, roughly, so we'll track.
Will the Park Board set up fees though?
Yes. And that's something we need to look at as, as the Park Board will definitely want to look at. You know, this is our year to really make an impact, I believe, you know, I thought. We, we were going to go from the twenty twenty season where, you know, we had to set the amount of people we could let in because of COVID. Now we're going to have to be watching our Vader load and, and, you know, maximum capacity. Hopefully, that's a, that's a problem we'll run into this season, is we're going to be at max capacity every day, so.
Good problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we had to take that after that year.
Yeah, we did.
Uh, so good.
Have you?
Are you?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor are passing Bill twenty twenty-two dash seven on a first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Chair, we entertain a motion to suspend the rules and pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash seven on a second reading by your call.
So, Mayor?
Second. Move to the second. Discussion?
Mayor, we're asking that we do this two times because we're giving a short time for them to hire lifeguards and get their positions in order.
Thank you for that question. Appreciate it.
Dr. Curtis?
Yes.
Julie Osmond?
Yes.
Roy Estes?
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler?
Yes.
Dennis M. Carr?
Yes. Bill twenty twenty-two dash seven passes. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, we have a first reading of Bill twenty twenty-two dash eight.
Bill twenty twenty-two dash eight, an ordinance on the City of Cameron, Missouri, vacating an alley in the west subdivision of Cameron, Missouri, formerly known as Riley Street.
Excuse me, thank you. Chair, we entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash eight on first reading. Motion second. Discussion, Director?
Uh, yes, you guys should be receiving your package information regarding how to vacation. Uh, city, uh, worked with the applicant, Sarah Barnes, on this project. Uh, she owns lots seven and eight. Uh, she is doing new construction. That is a hot ball-shaped alley. Uh, there is no use by the city to need that. And, uh, Sarah Barnes wants to vacate her portion, uh, lining up from lots one through five on Fourth Street. Uh, so the city worked with her to just vacate the whole alley. On the western portion of the alley, there is a permit structure there, uh, that should not be there. So, uh, we reached out to the, uh, the tenants or property owners to notify them of their proposed vacation alley, alley vacation. And, uh, and we, in the opposition, also went before planning and zoning, uh, January tenth, uh, this year for a recommendation for approval. City staff recommends approval for the alley vacation.
We said first told me that they were vacating alleys. I said, there's no Riley Street. Go back and, and get that fixed. Oh, yeah, there was a Riley Street. I, I know the, I, we, I think it was the twenties?
Yes.
It was bought in the twenties. When did it go from being a street to an alley? The twenties, I don't, I don't know.
Just for clarifying our mind.
Yeah, I got it from the screen.
Uh, this is a first reading. I, I think I told you earlier that I, I go there, record it as a full reading, so.
So whatever's in this building is there?
Well, we talked to the property owner to the north, uh, about the possibility of basically signing over there. So twenty-foot, twenty-foot wide alley, when you vacate an alley, ten foot goes to the property to the north, ten foot goes to property. So the property owner to the north, you know, basically says she's going to try to just, you know, give it, give it over to the property owner to the south. But that's something that they would have to do on their own, the city will be involved in that.
Any other questions, comments? We'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-two dash eight on first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, we have a first reading of Bill twenty twenty-two dash nine.
Bill twenty twenty-two dash nine, an ordinance authorizing the City of Cameron accounting staff to write off uncollectible utility accounts for the City of Cameron, Missouri.
Motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-two dash nine on first reading.
Sorry, head.
Move to the second. Discussion, uh, Court?
Yeah, this is a house speaking thing that we do each year, um, attached. You will see a list of what has been uncollectible debts. These utility accounts are all, have been in active for at least two years. Um, staff has gone through, applied for deposits. Um, this, this list was actually quite a bit longer, yet, um, they looked at existing accounts and co-occupants. And some of the, the balances were transferred out to, um, where the people are living now. Um, the rest of these people, I know will be on the accounts, but if they do come back for the utility service, they will be required to put up a deposit for the amount that we are writing off. If we will apply, um, to that, also.
All right. Uh, questions or comments? Seem enough, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of passing Bill twenty twenty-two dash nine on our first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, a resolution of the City of Cameron, Missouri, accepting the bid for the Cameron Memorial Airport, crack sealed micro surface and re-mark parallel taxiway, apron and taxi lanes. And awarding the bid to AmeriSeal of Ohio Beach.
All right, uh, Chair, we entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen.
So move.
Second?
Move to the second. Discussion?
A fourteen-day project includes rehabilitation of parallel taxi and apron. Taxi lanes of each of the pavements will receive a crack sealing and a micro surface sealing and new pavement markings per FAA standards. Construction is to be complete June first of twenty twenty-two. The AmeriSeal bid construction bid come in at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. CMT's construction management and design come in at fifty-five thousand. The City of Cameron, construction and designs there are totaled eighteen thousand, five eighty-two and eleven cents. MoDOT's AIP non-primary entitled grant funding has come in at three hundred and ninety-four thousand, fifty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total matching in grant funds is four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Will this be done, done in time for the balloon show?
Yes, uh, it's supposed to be done, complete by June first, and I believe the hot air balloon show is June fourth and fifth, something like.
Well, thank you to, uh, all involved in securing this grant, uh, four hundred and twelve thousand, or perhaps eighteen thousand five hundred. So, that's a really big factor. Okay, so if there's no other questions, comments, we'll go ahead and proceed to vote. All those in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Next item on the agenda, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of not to exceed six point four million dollars, as pool amounts for certificate of participation to provide funds to construct and equip a new community park in the City of Cameron, Missouri.
Thank you. Chair, we entertain a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Second, move to the second. Discussion?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Um, this evening, we are privileged by having, uh, one of our special counsel representatives from Gilmore and Bell. This is Hayden Crumpton. He's worked with the City of Cameron on other issues in the past, and we're fortunate to have someone, um, who is familiar with our, with our, um, debt service and other issues, working again on this one. So this is for the park construction, for the new community park. So the City of Cameron, this is the first step in officially going out to market for the debt service for the park, and it says not to exceed six point four million. And in order to do this, we are, we should engage DA Davidson to be our underwriter and Gilmore and Bell to be our, um, special counsel for this issue. They will authorize issue, perform the sale and delivery of this certificate of participation, um, debt. So if you have any technical questions, we have Hayden here, who would be, you know, the, the answer to those.
Are there any questions for Mr. Crumpton?
I think for Mr., uh, for Hayden, I think the question would come back then, uh, when will we be able to bring this back to the council and how long will that all take?
So currently, the schedule, the financing schedule for this transaction has the council formally approving the ordinance, authorizing the final documents to be entered into for this lease purchase transaction and authorizing the final financing terms relating to this certificate of participation by the end of April fourth, is waiting that to occur. So will we come back to the city council for actual final approval? This, this resolution just is a preliminary action to authorize us to just move forward and take the steps necessary to, to formally approve, uh, the final thing which will occur at second reading by April fourth.
That ordinance in April, would that need to be a full reading on, on that date or?
I think first, uh, first reading will be on the twenty-first, and then the final pricing, DA Davidson, the underwriter, is expected to sell these certificates of participation to investors on the morning of April fourth. On, at that, that afternoon, we'll have final pricing, uh, the final pricing terms established, and then the second reading and final approval of orders will take place on April fourth. And then closing of the transaction scheduled for, currently scheduled for April fourth.
Do you have, uh, for our, do you have a back table of what the interest rate was?
That's, I figured that would be one of the questions.
Yeah.
Uh, not, not as a financial advisor, like, just to reiterate, from the preliminary numbers that were provided by Charlie Zinn, that DA Davidson was the investment banker, that was the underwriter. Right now, it's showing an average interest rate of three point three eight percent, and granted, that's subject to market movements, especially considering the current global conditions right now.
What does that mean?
Right now, this is just preliminary numbers, it was, the preliminary numbers were provided by Charlie Zinn, that DA Davidson's, he did three point three eight percent as an average upon.
Three point three eight?
Yeah, again, that, that is completely subject to changes, it all, all was preliminary. The final, you know, the final interest rate will be approved by city council formally on, on the April fourth.
And then rates fix for twenty-five years?
That is, that would be, uh, yes, rate fixed for twenty-five, for twenty-five years, it's the financing that was out.
Will they, will they be paying, uh, interest on it on the entire lump amount or do you always say draw it down?
They, they, they would be paying interest on the entire lump amount because this would be sold on the secondary market to investors. So the entire lump sum will be available and provided in the project fund, minus cost of issuance. That would be paid relating to the transaction, and then the project fund is held by the trust, the city draws that project fund as they need to make payments to pay instructional improvements for these.
And right now, the Park Board is saying they will be open on Labor Day, so we'll spend all that money this summer.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Crumpton. Appreciate it.
We'll be back in a minute.
Okay, uh, we will go ahead and proceed to vote. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of passing Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. Thank you again for making the trip up here, Mr. Crumpton. Okay, next item on the agenda is our second public participation. If anybody wishes to address the council, please come to the podium, keep your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes to address the council. Okay. Seem enough, we will proceed to the next item. Ms. Wainey's comments from the staff, and we'll start with the vote.
Um, I will be in the office next Monday morning, but then I'll be leaving for the first office on Thursday, so we will be out of the office for Friday and next week. I also have a statement that I want to read. Um, there was a letter to the editor recently that had a lot of misinformation in it, and it, it has come up before with other staff members. I just wanted to get this information out there, so that it's correct. Um, in a recent letter to the editor, there were some factual errors concerning the city's fire chief, Michael Donnell, and the Missouri local government employees retirement system, loggers. The letter to the editor stated, the chairman of the PNC community is the city's salaried fire chief, and as of the city's kitchen funds, loggers, or the maximum age for a salaried firefighter is sixty. I would like to correct this information by explaining that none of the fire fighters are full-time employees, except for those employees who are full-time in other departments. The Cameron Park department began as a voluntary department, but is currently considered a paid-for-call department, as they receive twenty-five dollars for each fire call they respond to. The fire department personnel are paid quarterly for those fire calls, they attend, and the officers of the fire department also receive a quarterly administrative fee for the extra work performed as a function of their office. Only those employees who are full-time in other departments are members of the loggers. Chief O'Donnell is not now, nor has he ever been a member of the loggers retirement system. Missouri statute to guide the rules and regulations of loggers, statute, statute seventy point six fifty pertains to mandatory retirement ages. It says, subject to the provisions of any applicable federal or state law, the governing body of an employer may determine the mandatory separation age for its employees. The City of Cameron has not set any mandatory retirement age, as evidenced by the twenty nineteen proclamation honoring former firefighter Kyle Taylor on his nine-year birthday after fifty-two years of service to the department. Police and fire department employees, when applicable, can take full retirement at age fifty-five and early retirement at age fifty. Regular employees can retire at age sixty or take early retirement at age fifty-five. I urge the public to question information that is provided to them as fact from questionable sources, and urge them to seek out answers for themselves. I would also like to take this opportunity to honor fire chief Michael O'Donnell for his thirty-five years as fireman, his many years on the painting and zoning condition and Board of Adjustment, as well as his participa- participation in the Cameron Chamber of Commerce and EDO. He's a stellar example of a public service, and I can why and comprehend how being such can ever be a reason to be lonely. Thank you, Fire Chief O'Donnell. Thank you, Fire Chief O'Donnell, for listening.
Well spoken.
I'll, uh, I'll further, uh, counselor, you agree with what you said?
Yep.
Okay. All right. All right, that will take us next to the management.
Nothing further, thanks, Mayor.
Do you have any? Chief? Chief O'Donnell? Correct?
No, sir.
Counselor?
Yeah, sir.
Okay. That will conclude the comments from the staff. And, uh, next will be Ms. Wayne's comments from the council, and we'll start the, the council.
Um, well, thank you, Charlotte, for that. Um, I know a lot of people, uh, so that they don't like to get on social media and everything. And I, I read every comment that I, you know, and I also read everything in the paper. And then I do try to find my own opinion. And I also have friends with people that have different opinions than me. But sometimes I can go back to those friends and ask them to change their minds because, uh, when you've got somebody that's probably the smartest person in town, who's most willing to serve, I don't think they should be criticized very much.
I agree. Oh, thanks. Um, I would like to let him say.
We have four war-carrying wrestlers that, uh, qualify for state in Cape Girardeau this weekend. Uh, I ask for prayers for the community for safe travels and healthy competition.
Well, congratulations to the U- wrestlers. It was a challenging sport. Uh, also, uh, and we've already said this several times, but it's worth saying again. Thank you, Chief O'Donnell. Uh, I can't think of a person that has dedicated more personal and professional time to the betterment of this community, trying to help, uh, people in this community in so many different ways. So, uh, I, I, I just don't say thank you publicly. Okay, um, that will conclude it for, uh, the comments from the council. Next item on the agenda is executive session for attorney-client communication, real estate personnel, and negotiating contracts. Chair entertain a motion, we go into executive session by oral call.
Move to the second?
Julie Osmond?
Yes.
Roy Estes?
Yes.
Gina Reed Hitler?
Yes.
Dennis M. Clark?
Yes.
Thank you for this.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero opposed. We can, uh, head into executive session. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your input, and, uh, we have a great day.